Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the July 17, 2024 session of the High Park, County High Park Plan Board. I guess follow the exit signs on your way out in case there's an emergency. Hopefully, there won't be a fire in the firehouse. If we could, if we could all stand and say what we...
By the flag of the American states of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, I'd just like to announce that I'm running a meeting in Chairman Dupree's absence. And I would like to introduce our newest board member at the end there, Dylan Tull. Dylan comes to us with a lot of experience and is a great asset to the board. And I'm looking forward to seeing you when you're here. We have also done a switch up of our agenda. We've changed the public hearings and the workshops so that the workshops are first. This is in case anybody thought that they needed to go to town hall for the public hearings and get there and find out that it's here and get in their car and drive back here. So we've given them ample time to get here and have their say. So hopefully, you will bear with us as we mix it up a little bit. It's good to mix it up, right? Our first item on the agenda is a workshop with Jeffrey Groves Estates. And I see Mr. Kaufman has already parked myself here. Taken up residence. Thank you so much. Now, this is a continuation of the site plan amendment approval. But this is more for amendment, correct?
Correct.
All right. May I just give us a quick overview?
Sure. So we generally kept the original approvals intact. What we added is similar to what we were approved on Daniel's Way. We have porches and patios in the back and privacy fences that we added. We also have located on the first lot a project sign, which we provided a project application for, a project signed application for. And we will have the same sign on both Blair Road and Daniel's Way. Blair Road should be a part of this approval. Daniel's Way, I just submitted already the fact.
Okay. So have you submitted the signage yet?
We have.
Okay.
Have you been recommended yet from the zoning administrator?
Oh, okay. Great.
They're refining them.
Thank you. Okay. So they're being worked on as we speak? You have a concern?
There is some feedback on them. But you know, when we have our sign company, then you should be fully compliant with all of your insert cards.
Excellent. Excellent. And then I think tonight, we're looking to type the action. I refer to county planning so that we can get that reviewed and see if there's any comments. I'm just curious why the switch from it was, there were just decks and had a patio and had a deck?
Well, because, you know, we wanted to have better use of the back area. So, you know, we did the same as what you approved on Daniel's Way. The patios for the full spans of the backyard, I mean, not the full spans of the backyard, from end to end of the townhouse, and then it comes out. But we also added privacy fences so that, you know, people can actually own property.
That makes sense.
Yeah. I mean, it's identical to what was approved.
Right. And that was also the change. I'm going to start with our consultants and ask Ms. Moss if you have any comments on this.
I'd just like to recognize that the new patios at the full width don't come out any further, but they are very close to the 100-foot stream port. The old patios work as well.
Okay. On your site plan, it shows the 100-foot back of it.
It's a flat line on this.
And it's, they will, correct, you can see it there. And they do not encroach.
Close but...
Close but no.
Gotcha. Anything else?
We'll work out the sign.
Megan, do you have any comments on this application?
I do not.
Mrs. Carolyn?
No, I don't have any comments on this particular aspect, but just to, you know, the board, I mean, if you drive up there, all the buildings are completed, the landscaping's in, the road was paved this week. And who's getting close to, you know, the COs?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I have pictures. I don't know how to, you know, that's beyond my capability, but I'm not under 30. So I have pictures if you're curious. It looks bad.
If you send them to Cynthia.
Yeah, it looks great.
She can circulate them.
Yeah, you know, landscaping's in, paving's in. Actually, people up there just confirmed it and saw that. And if you drive by, you see...
We were going to make a final inspection. It looks nice. They did a nice job.
Excellent. Victoria, any questions or comments?
I guess it's a question about the sign. It was originally on North Cross Road.
Well, no, right.
But now...
We moved it in, we moved it onto our property from the ground.
Is it on Lot 1?
Yeah, it's on Lot 1.
So is that part of the whole feature we got to have an easement or are you going to re-grant it?
Well, you know, we own Lot 1 and, you know, the sign is on that there.
I mean, I know you're not intending to sell, but they will sell the lots.
They will sell the lots. So I don't know if we need an easement now for your satisfaction, but, you know, at this point, we can get an easement from ourselves to ourselves.
Yeah, or if a lot of it works for the...
Please speak up when you ask a question. Thank you.
Yes, just think about the easement because we will...
That won't be difficult. There's a, you know, certain aspect of it that is electrifying, you know, the back lighting, you know, the silhouettes, the letters, lettering. So I guess it should show the electric light as well.
Yes.
Anything else? Victoria?
Oh, we have a resolution prepared tonight to refer to county planning. Do you have any comments?
Okay. I'm going to start with my right. So, do you have any comments on this?
I have something to add other than that I did drive by the other day and it is looking very nice and complete and looking forward to wrapping this one up.
It's gated tonight because the paving just happened yesterday. So, but I assume we'll lift the gates tomorrow. Come on by, you may be in pain.
Oh, cool. Okay, thank you. And now, are there comments? So others?
No, I did a drive by, I saw it over the weekend. Everything was...
And on this, I did want to just clarify that you have been able to come up with speed on this fairly lengthy agenda.
Yes.
Some heavy lifting. Do you have any comments on this application?
I will echo others that are by this weekend. It looks nice.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just for the board's information, I have a couple of people actually living in a motel waiting with bated breath to get in. So whatever you can, you know, whatever I can do or you can do to expedite it, then you appreciate it. So if I have their first experience with IFR, be a pleasant...
So we have 30 days for county planning.
We can ask for expedited review.
And until the plans are signed, I'm not signing the CO.
Well, we should go up and do a final inspection next year. So we can get that out of the way so that when the CO, so that you are, I think that Don's all set?
I think Don's all set. And we'll look at the phasing loop because I know that we phased the building so that sun could go through.
Right. So each building is a phase and we did that so we could, you know, we wouldn't have to landscape the entire job.
Right. But you did it anyway.
We've done most of it, yeah.
You did.
Yeah, whatever. And we had a nice rain. I asked for it. They gave it to us.
Every day.
So it's been a good weekend.
Excellent. Cynthia, is that, can you ask county planning or should I ask county planning?
I can ask them when I put in the form.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. So who has the resolution?
I do.
Excellent. You can start right off. And you know that all we do is the wherethes, you don't have to read the whole thing just to hold it there?
First, whereas, and then a series of whereas.
There you go.
Resolution to reaffirm a secret negative declaration and refer the application to the Dutch's County Department of Planning and Development, Jeffrey Groves Estates, July 17, 2022, Resolution 2018-04Q and 68-12M. Whereas on the number 20th, 2019, by Resolution number 2018-4I, the planning board granted amended conditional site plan approval to North Cross LLC for 12 residential townhouses on Daniel's Way and 38 townhouses on Blair Road. And whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore, we have resolved that. One, the planning board hereby reaffirms its prior secret determination of significance adopted on November 2, 2005, and reaffirmed on April 18, 2018, determining that the amended project will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared. Two, the planning board hereby waives the requirement for a public hearing upon the recommendation of zoning administrator Moss. Three, directs its secretary to refer the application to the Dutch's County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to detection 239M of the general municipal law.
Second, is there any discussion on this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any absentions, any nays, no motion carries? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have another, yeah, great. I don't know, Mr. Tull must be a busy homie, moving along so quickly. The, I have a continued public hearing at the Coward Trail, but I don't do some affairs. I'm not prepared to act tonight, so if that could be put on to the next meeting.
We can adjourn. Yes, till August 7?
Yes, please.
Later.
Later. When it comes up, we will. Not right now at this moment, but we will when it comes up. Okay.
You can leave if you don't want to.
Yes.
Feel free.
I mean, I love the dig, but let me take you up. Especially Cynthia, that I can tell her right down the block. How many things do you want to tell us?
About... About the problem.
I have to say, I want this paper with the town with it.
So the next item on the agenda is grounded dispensary. Welcome back. I've spent a lot of activity since last week I saw you.
In order?
Notes here. So there's been a new law enacted. And you have been very busy. So perhaps you would like to give us a brief overview from the last planning side. There's been architectural changes, has been law changes?
Yes.
Everything.
Law's inactive, so we finally moved forward properly. We changed a bunch of architect to satisfy everyone, including ourselves. Updated lighting schedule based off the county comments, a few other county comments that we addressed as well in the plans. And just looking to move this forward as quickly as we can.
We did get approval for the septic waste water on site. D O T, that is there. We have a work permit from D O T. We should be in order if you have a final site plan approval.
Right. So now, on top of the site plan approval, we now have a special use permit process, which we'll be walking through. You've submitted your application for that. And so we've been talking about how best to handle this. And it appears that we're very close to site plan, to consider site plan approval. So we're probably be looking to set up public hearing.
Yes.
But we do have some more, a few questions left on the site plan application itself. And then there's a special use process, permit process that we're going to try to muddle through because I think it's, although the town board is going to decide and determine the overall completeness and approval, we still need to talk through the special use permit and make sure that everything that is supposed to be on this thing. Did I say that correctly?
Yep. Once the board is ready to approve the site plan, they'll also be making a recommendation to the town board on special use permit.
Okay. Great. So maybe we should go through the site plan first and then we can talk about the special use permit. So the site plan, we got the review, but that was on the special use permit. But we do have some outstanding items, I think still, just small, on the... So I'm going to start with the consultants because they'll probably drop my memory. Ted, is there any outstanding items on the site plan for ground dispenser?
I did review the signage. I did not write it up. I will. The maximum area signage is below what's allowed. The freestanding sign has the haloed letters with opaque face. And the square footage is within the allowable limits. The overall height that shows this top of the squish, I need to know what that height is. There's a maximum. And the wall sign is also a haloed lit, is also within the square footage. And the planning board, I believe, will need to relax the letters from 10 inches to 12 inches.
And then...
First, what's the...
Yes.
What's the total square foot area?
The total square foot area was seven and a half square feet for the wall sign.
And for the monument?
For the monument, it was 21 square feet.
So both sides?
We only count one.
One, okay. Gotcha.
Can you say this is for the wall monument?
Yeah.
So the only height? It's four foot, four feet high, but I'll confirm.
The four foot, I think, is to the top of the sign where the letters are and then it's the square above.
So it's the total height?
Yeah.
The highest piece on there, right? Is there anything else on there that you...
No, I think I'm good.
Okay. Megan, anything on the site plan for this?
We did have some remaining site plan comments. I don't know if you want me to go pull it up?
Yes, yeah, because we're, I'm sure they'd like to hear that.
Okay, sure. So on the cover page, we've got the list of all of the sheets, so I included your sand set.
Yep.
We just discussed the sign. The, now that the special use permit has been established, that process, all of the use on this kind of street needs to be updated as well.
How do, I mean, since it's new, how do we want that to look out there? Do we want it, is there any specific urban, do you need it to say?
Can you speak up a little, please?
Sorry.
I think what you're saying is instead of commercial general, it should say county dispensary.
Correct.
Gotcha.
An additional note should be added regarding the landscaping plan, that no substitutions would be allowed without approval.
Yep.
And that you'll maintain it to the... For the dead end parking area, one of those spaces should be striped so that people can back out.
Is that required to strike the sign? Yeah.
Is it required to have a... Because I don't think that's what she said.
No. Still allowed for turnaround in a dead end.
And we're still moving the parking.
But some requirement, it's a, we've noticed that it's needed.
Yeah, I know it's needed. But the number of spaces, you're still updating. Yes.
Yes.
Can you identify which area of the parking area?
Just one. So that's the man I'm going to...
I think it said in the comment, they were big towards the end, south of the... Yeah, the south end.
We'll work out, we'll work out the details outside of the meeting.
So moving on to the lighting plan, it does appear to have hotspots and the maximum generally for greening guidelines is five hook cables. There are a few spots that I've traced to the team because the dark areas also amount nine, so that should probably be brought down to be about five or twelve square meters.
So the comment we have from the engineer is hotspots are all directly below the luminaires, which are at the right angle in required height.
Take out the bulb?
Take out the bulb.
Some of the fixtures have, I need to integrate.
Yeah, I think there's like multiple bulb options for each fixture, so we can change the bulb option.
Okay. Great. And then our next comment, it's directly related to that, that there are two types of recess lights shown, and drop ones are flat ones, and we should specify which one of those is being used.
Yes.
Or both where specifically they are.
No drop ones.
Just appear to be below the... Should have still...
Correct. I will, the engineer commented on that one, he said the recess lights are the flat line as indicated by the rectangle, that's the ordering in two lines. I can't really read it, but anything with a box is what he has in mind as well, or anything.
Which fixture are you talking about?
These are for the flat ones.
The recess line.
Yes. So that's the C P Y series version six. And it should have the squares around in the correct ordering. It's no box.
It seems to show the, both the drop ones and the flat ones on there.
Oh, you mean between these two pictures?
There's two pictures.
I got you. Are there specific model numbers?
You can blow it up at the top using the little plus sign.
Thank you.
There we go.
Okay, so it just says flat and drop.
Yes.
Okay, I see what you mean.
Does that say we can clarify the resolution?
We need something to set a hearing, so they can...
You're going to hear it? Yeah, they can.
If needed, we need a presentation.
Okay, I'll make sure that that question is clarified, whether it's drop or flat. No problem. Thank you. Thank you.
So the next color would be the fencing detail should be provided for the fence and the ducts.
So with that one, there is no more dumpsters in that area. We're now, which it shows it on the plan, we're just going to have the roll off dumpsters right here, security fence is locked between the gate. It's going to be behind that. There is a note somewhere there.
Remove the dumpster area. It used to be in the south.
Yeah, so this is no longer a dumpster area.
Nor that one.
Nor this one that was there.
It's a good snow area.
So this is next, that is the next one that's a snow and that's going to be right here.
Oh, okay.
And then I think, yeah, there's just rolling trash bins to be stored in fenced security area, which is right here.
Which is fenced anyway because of the requirements for your building, right?
Yeah, the fencing actually isn't required, but we're doing it there for certain things that we might need to have secured for outside back there as far as delivery goes. But yes, and then that's the snow comment will be pushed here.
And we'll need that labeled, I think. That's the snow.
So we'll label, yes, so we'll label where we're going to put it. We'll confirm with the engineer, that'll be that. Is that good for the trash portion? Rolling trash?
Okay.
That's what I, we'll just be fine. We don't need...
Yeah, we're just usually concerned that if it's just those green bins sitting in the middle of the parking lot, I think you, but you're taking care of that, it's a screen in.
Correct.
And then I would like my last comment, as we discussed the snow, would be a question that if salt present, should be placed along the tree line to the west. That will remain undisturbed to ensure that nothing is disturbed in that area.
Oh, for term construction. Yeah, I'm going to have that comment too, because there's no erosion control shown on, shown on the plan.
Okay.
That'll be, that'll be in my comment letter. That'll come out in a few days. Yeah, we'll set that one.
The rest of our comments could change to the special use permit.
Right. What you were looking at here? Pete, comments?
Yeah, so we got a new submission on June 28, 28. I took a look at it today. I was down by the site late today, so I stopped in. I'll issue a comment letter in a few days. Nothing, nothing really major. But one thing I wanted to ask about is there's a portion of the existing wooden retaining wall that's on the adjoining property, so Victoria, do you need to do anything with that? It runs, it runs all the way along here on their site. And then there's a portion of it to the west that goes on to the neighboring property, so I don't know if that's something we, we think we'll bring it up.
Does it, does it hold up this building or is it supporting this building?
Well, I think it just, I think it just basically holds it up to this grazing here.
So it's benefited, you said?
Yes, that's, you know, the ground.
I think it also holds back the ground in the parking lot on the next floor.
So I would ask that you look to see if there's a title reported, if we already have an easement. If not, you can help the board. And if we can't get it, we're going to add a note that says, you know, we're not doing any part of the site plan. As long as it's not changing, it's still, we'll say something like it's in different conditions, but we'll check first to see if...
So the other, the other thing that I'll bring up is you need to show where the group leaders are, I mean, for, you know, the building and where they're going to be discharged. And then just to the north, the north of the building, if you go there, there's a, I believe it's a proposed drainage structure. I did stop there. I didn't see any, I didn't see any existing drainage there, but Tim has it where it's got a catch base. Can you go to the site plan? You just have the site plan somewhere? So right to the, right, just below where it says River Point Road, it's maybe a little hard to see, but right in that area, but yeah, there's a proposed catch base and there's a, and there's a drain outlet that's shown going into, going towards the D O T right way.
I see the square.
Right, right there, you know, that's the intersection right there. So that's, well, I think if you, I think if he looks at the graves, I don't think, I don't think you can daylight it based upon what I saw, but there's no, there's no like elevations on here. I'll bring it up. But if that's, if that's a brand new catch base, then it's going to, it's not there. I mean, I didn't see it there. So anyways, I'll bring it up. You'll have to look at it. But if it's, if it's like proposed, it's going to be discharging right into the D O T right way. They're going to have, you're going to have to just get the okay from the D O T on that. I didn't see anything here, so I think it's, I think it's proposed. But I'll bring it up and you'll have to have Tim.
All right.
And then if this doesn't show where your septic system is, was that, was that on another plant? Something on the side side.
So wait for removal on site. There, this one.
Where is it?
That old sketch of distance between wells and all that.
And this was approved by?
Where is it? Under the parking lot. Under the parking.
Oh, it's under, under the park, under the parking lot.
Down the back, you go.
Comes up the back. Okay.
Under the block.
All right, so that's fine. The only reason, the only reason that, the only reason I ask that is because with the rain garden there in front, sometimes they get a little swirling in terms of who's got your shit, be an offset from potential, I mean, water feature to the separate system, but that's not works there. That's not, yeah, that's fine. It's going to be under the parking lot.
I can get it pulled down to the parking lot. You usually don't have that.
Tim worked very hard on this.
We've done it on a couple of other projects.
It's a tight site.
That's fine, whatever. They approved it.
Yeah, they approved it. We're satisfied. Hold on.
Okay, so I'll have some minor stuff. I'll get it out in a couple days. It's nothing that's a big deal. And I'll work, I mean, if Tim asks questions, he'll call me.
Thank you, Pete. I'll go to your, your write-up, your official write-up. Victoria, any site plan comments?
No, no site plan comments.
Okay. Starting to my left, so do you have any comments on this application?
I'll echo that it's, it's overlit right now. I know it's, I know it's come down. I, the engineer may have to, like, just lower into the, now coming out of these fixtures, we need to rearrange a few things and try to find where to, to make it a little more even holover than this.
Can I speak more? So actually, actually, I like the lighting. I was, I hadn't really looked at it because that's something, you know, that Nelson Pope does. But do you really need 16-foot tall fixtures there? I mean, for the site. It's pretty tall for a small site.
114, with the base, are they 16?
I think it is.
I think it's with the base.
What's it say there? What's it say there again?
14, 14 from the
Great.
No, it's 14 from here. Yes, top of the base to the
16, right, so from like the grave, 16 to the bottom, correct.
And it also says upon it how it's elevated, so
It does say 16 feet, pole mounted parking.
16 feet.
Whatever, it just seems, you know, to me for, to me for like a small like site, it seems, seems tall.
And how many poles are there?
Four.
There's four. Yeah, we usually try to get them down possible.
I mean, I know, I mean, that's within, that's within our code.
It is, it is.
It's within our code, but
And it's, we usually have a problem when there's 20 of them.
Should we not put four?
Well, I mean, the problem is once you lower them, it makes a
Yeah, that's right.
But it's a, it's a given case, recognize if they lower it.
Less, less when you're taller.
Often the answer is to add one or ten from where they were. So that your couches, you have more even lighting and it's lower. Say that again, sir. Often the answer is to actually add a fixture with the handle that's more even all around the parking lot.
So when you look at your light plan, you might ask them to play around a little bit and see if that helps even out?
By adding.
Yeah, sure, shorter.
Shorter.
And lower. Could accomplish
And then I don't know if that says there that the base is supposed to be painted black.
We, we do actually ask that the bases be painted to match it's a black mold that matches, so it's not concrete.
I'll put that, I'll put that, I'll put that in mind. They will be black.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Pete.
Okay, sorry.
No, 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 it's
Oh yeah, it says to be painted black.
Does it say it? Okay, okay.
Thanks, Tim.
Is there any other comments? The waters.
No, thank you for the, the work on the design and
Thank you.
It looks great, yeah. It looks good, and that one on the other side by, there.
It looks, looks your honor.
Yeah, with your honor, it looks, it looks great.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes, thank you.
Well, I echo the architectural improvements too. I think that was really a nice add. I appreciate the effort and I appreciate your help to get them there.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver?
I will also echo the architectural improvements. I think the building looks great. The only comment that I'm gonna make about the lighting is, given the location, that it's not an extremely populated area, I know that our residential area is behind it, but and the nature of the business, I'm not necessarily opposed to having a little bit of extra lighting on the site. So that's, those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia?
No comments.
Okay. So I think the only comment that I saw that wasn't covered, it's just, I think we might have discussed this, with sidewalks. There's a sidewalk requirement, but you have a weird 50-foot DOT right-of-way right there, which is where it might go. Can you guys help me to remember if we've discussed this and
We discussed sidewalks on this particular job.
This particular job.
From what Mike said to us, he said that that sidewalk in front is not needed.
Well, it's not that it's not needed, but in that district, I believe they are required. Yes, they are required.
We have a nice one in front of the building.
There's time to walk, it would be the only sidewalk on or done. There's no, nobody else has sidewalks.
So understood, but that's
Mike Zotto has one?
Mike Zotto.
Well, but we tied, but, but we tied them into Stewart's, right? Yes.
Yeah, I mean, where are
What we're hoping is that if you put one in, then as the next sites develop, and we will probably have people walking from the house or from the bus, or
Possibly.
Possibly. I mean, you know.
So where's the sidewalk? You have a great change though, and you have the great change in the wall, and you have that right-of-way, I'm not sure.
Is it, would it be truly eight feet?
Yeah.
Should we go back to the second?
You have that ceiling wall on the whole south side.
On the south side, when you go to the next property.
How would it?
Does it, does it drop?
Yeah.
It's a step?
And they could put it on old retaining wall. Right in the wall of that.
You've got it in line.
Yeah.
The DOT right-of-way.
That's DOT property.
Yeah.
So they could put one.
Well, I just wanna make sure that we are adhering to all the elements that are required in this district.
That was one of the county's comments.
Yeah, right, exactly, exactly. And I do understand that it might not immediately connect, but if the next site were to come in, they, you might need to address that drop. Because it steps there or something. We don't generally like to let people knock with that in.
Frank, do you know the distance from the edge of your front sidewalk to the edge of the right-of-way?
So here to the River Point Road?
No, to the DOT
So like the sidewalk here
That's the number.
To here.
Yeah, that's the number right there.
No, that's, that's to the front of a building.
Oh, okay. And the sidewalk is how many feet?
Six and five, eight, five.
Well, there's a difference. We break notes to the left, yes.
Forty-five.
Looks like it's a, it's a, about 30, 35 feet, about.
From the outside edge to the right-of-way?
From, well, you want it, you
Well, it's 30 to the building, so it's less than that.
Yeah.
It's 25, it's in the low twenties.
I'm just trying to think about, because you can't ask them to put a sidewalk on DOT right-of-way, right?
Well, we have in the past, so the way the code reads is that in this district, the applicant shall provide a sidewalk along the full frontage. And we have required them DOT right-of-ways, we have required them private property, but then they have to offer an easement for the public to traverse it. So it's, the DOT right-of-way is not the issue. They do have an opportunity though, under 108.4.5, to request a modification of the standard requirement due to, one, practical difficulties of applying the standard to a particular project, two, potential adverse impact on surrounding properties in the neighborhood of applying or not applying the standard, and three, feasibility of alternate means or measures to change, to achieve the same goal of the standard. So when this came up in other projects, sometimes we had a walking path, depending on the, whether it's been terrain issues. So the board will have to consider whether this is an appropriate location for a sidewalk. Okay? And the applicant can raise their case under section 108.4.5.
So let's, let's ask the board, what do you think? Because I don't know, I, I've heard that there might be continued development to the south that might end up putting in sidewalks, making it easier to walk from from Maris and those other areas up. If you have one that goes across your building, maybe you can come off the, that southern tip and go down. You know, it's
Also the north tip.
Yeah.
Whatever comes to me, mine fitness.
Let me ask our board members. John, what do you think?
Because, because once you get above, once you get above plant, fitness, the shoulder there is very, very like wide, probably 15 feet wide, up, you know, up to, you know, the culinary, the culinary entrance. I mean, going to the south, I mean, I don't know that, I mean, you know, no
Well, there's two more businesses to the south.
It's a difficult gap.
Then there's a difficult gap.
There's a stream there.
We've got lots of streams.
I mean, I, I would think that, in my opinion, on the other side of the road is more conducive for sidewalks. And it, I mean, there is no crosswalk there. I know crosswalk there, it'd be pretty hard to do like a sign right, but I don't know if I'm, I don't know if I can ask them to put a sidewalk in there because it's so compact. Because of that, you're gonna have a sidewalk when you have the side of the road. I mean, if they can come up from Shop Right eventually, that's gonna be the goal, for sure. And that's why I have sidewalks. Right? Okay. That's just
Okay, thank you. Mr. Oliver?
I would also agree with John. I'm not sure that it's necessarily the most conducive site and I can definitely support an argument to not put a sidewalk in along there.
I think I agree. That's where I'm leaning, I just especially if they're down, I mean, they're not, you know, so although I don't, I'd still like them to figure out how they're gonna make requests for the waiver. I mean, I'm just gonna say, let's skip this, I mean, but I'm open to making, I'm definitely open to making a case under the code.
I, I kind of agree with, with my colleagues.
Okay.
I'm, I'm leaning that way. Sidewalks to nowhere are frustrating and it don't make sense if there's no long-term plan. Right? In this situation, this is, if this is a road that is seeing more significant development both to the north and the south, Bellfield and Hudson Heritage, it is an area that is seeing some fatalities of people walking or biking along the road. And if there was a potential to connect through here, then this would make all the sense in the world. I don't see an engineering reason why this can happen, do you agree with what happens? It's, it's a workable thing. What gives me pause is the area directly to the south of this, where you have that stream crossing under, essentially you can rebuild a culvert, extend a culvert, it would be a large project to get that done. On the other side of the road, Hudson Heritage ended their sidewalk up at the intersection for Quiet Cove, and it's a little unclear if and when any kind of walking connection is going to be made between that project on that side of the road and where we're working here. If it is, it'll probably be a non-ADA head of walking trail through the, through the woods and such. So it's a tough one. That's what I'm thinking right now.
Definitely need the waiver.
So you should provide the board with your best argument under 108.4.5 on why you do not want to provide sidewalks unless you want to.
Gotcha. Okay.
All right. So I think we've discussed site plan. Anyone want to mention special use permit?
Let's do it.
All right. Hey, do you have any comments on the special use permit?
I did a review and I submitted it. I believe it's moving forward. What's supposed to be in it, I did not review it for whether or not it's included or not.
Okay. All right. Hey, you?
We have a couple comments on this one. The first being that a dispenser is not allowed within 500 feet of a limitation use. So something should be submitted indicating that it's not within 500 feet. There is a location that, but it only shows properties within 400 feet, and it doesn't state what they use.
So in regards to that one, I took a nice screenshot of Google Maps, it shows all the businesses in the area. I'm gonna email that to everybody. Maybe print, I could send that to, but it clearly shows that there's no church or schools that'll be out there.
So the next one is that the distance between candidates' establishments cannot be less than a mile, so similarly proving that there's nothing within a mile that is same use. The map with distance that is required.
So we did, we did submit a map that shows any candidate's establishments, pretty much from Hyde Park, Wathertown, and Eller New Falls. First off, the miles distance thing, I just wanna confirm, that only is in regards to the town Hyde Park, correct? It doesn't have anything to do with the surrounding town, because they have their own laws and the state has their own laws.
That's, that's a question. Consider it.
But, and then the closest dispenser to us right now currently is 2.3 miles away in the city. But yes, I'll put a statement that's actually, and I can include an updated map that sometimes it updates.
Okay, great. So the floor plan included with the site plan should be checked against the attachment and special use permit application. It looks like it might not be exactly the same, and whatever the most recent one is should be
Yeah, do you have a specific on that? Because I looked at both of them, I couldn't find a difference, so I was curious on what you saw.
I don't have a specific because I didn't write this down.
Because I did, I went, I had them both next to me, I'm looking at them and they were the same to me, so I, I just, yeah. No, they're both, but they're all colored.
Possibly some difference.
Yeah, it says possibly some differences, but I don't, I truly don't think there is
I think, if nothing else, just making sure that whatever gets submitted is exact same in both of them.
Yeah, because there's one that was a
A previous version.
There was previous versions, but then there was also one, the one on the site plan is a little less detailed, the one that was submitted with this special use permit has a lot more detail in it because that was our official one.
Okay.
So the loading area and patio, we have a comment that it's shown as patio sheet 101. And what is the purpose of the patio? And we bring it up mostly because the special use permit limits considering noise and people are gonna be congregating in that area.
So it is really just a place for the employees to enter, but just instead of leaving it as a grassy patio in case somebody's gonna go out on a 10-minute break and stand there.
Please speak up.
With the what?
With the rolling, uh, refuge container.
Oh, okay.
It's gonna be on that tag. Cover is almost 30.
So you can just stay there.
Stay there.
And then lastly, question of if there's proposed to be outdoor security video, there's another indoor, but if there's any sort of like parking lot
Yeah, there's gonna be, the entire perimeter is gonna be under surveillance as well, that's required by the state, and we're also gonna have extremely high-quality ones on the back of the parking lot that can be licensed plates for security purposes. So we can hand that to the security
Please speak up.
The details are in the security plan, which is to be given to the Hyde Park Police Department.
Correct. And it is a confidential document, which, but I did hand in all the copies to everybody, so they shouldn't have it. It is separate, though, then from the special use application document.
Okay. Both are all about, right, special use permit comments.
Thank you. Pete? Victoria?
I mean, I just looked at the language to answer your question, I think it applies outside of the borders as well, but doesn't matter, you said 2.3 miles. I don't have any comments on the special use permit application.
Okay, so can you tell us, how does all this mesh now?
So
Is it separate? Or you have site plan, which we're taking, we're moving it through.
The first step in the law is per se, or legally declared, previously classified this as type two, because it fits within the type two exception for reuse of an existing structure. So seeker is complete. The planning board is passing the site plan application. It was already referred to county planning, so the next step is for you to set a public hearing. And once this process is completed, you're gonna send your, you know, an approved site plan with a condition that it's subject to special use permit issuance over to the town board, as well as a recommendation on the special use permit. And then they have their own process to follow with that.
Are there public hearings?
I believe, thank you, you had that one.
Yes.
The special use permit. Okay. Did any, did anyone here have any comments on the special use permit? So then we would like to consider setting a public hearing for the site plan, and if everybody's in agreement, we could set a public hearing for August 7th, which is our next meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Go ahead, second. Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion varies, send public hearing is set for August 7th. Good discussion, hopefully you've got it all in point, you need
Addressed the law?
I'll be addressed by August 7th, probably sooner.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is the Hyde Park Town Center, Building 3. Next item on the agenda is the Hyde Park Town Center North building 3. Otherwise known as FEED POTS. All right. So, you have, you have asked to come before us and...
Yes.
Talk about the amendment to a site, a site plan application, which is bringing something approved, which you've done so much over time. Right?
Yeah.
All the buildings there are looking great. The businesses are appearing to be flourishing. And so, the last one there is number 3. I'll let you...
Okay, sure. So, I'm Kelly Leibelt with KAR Site Planning's office. And as you indicated, we're here for the last building at the Hyde Park Town Center. We call it Hyde Park Town Center North. For those in the public or who are watching, this is where the new ready coffee application is. I think everyone knows everything. We were before this board back in 2018 and went through somewhat of a master plan approval for this site. So, site plan approval modifications to all the elevations of the buildings. This is the last building that requires some modifications. So, we did Mavis, emergency 1. It's ready coffee BOE, which is in the old Orange Market. We did a building to the north, which has a number of different users in there, barber shop, cameras, et cetera. And so, this is the last building. We just have a little presentation that we have for you. It's easier for us so that everyone knows what we're talking about.
Thank you for this, Kelly. I definitely thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. So, this is just to give everyone an idea of where we are and the different buildings that we propose. So, we're on the second page. I'll tell you on return.
Thank you.
We're gonna go to the third page. So, this is the existing building. Just shows you a photograph of the existing building. So, on slide 3 should be slide numbers at the bottom. Just to give you a perspective of where we are on the site plan, this is that last building that has the circle around it on the sheet that you're looking at. As indicated in the application materials and also on this plan, we're not proposing any changes to the site plan. So, there's no parking modifications, no additional landscape and support. This is simply just exterior modifications. And so, short and sweet is we had an approved elevation with approved materials. It's priced in now, six years later. It's also prohibitive for us to build what we are proposing. And so, what we're coming back with is a modified plan for the elevation of the building. So, we're gonna go to sheet 4. Slide 4. So, this is just a comparison of what was previously approved, which is the top sheet, the 2018 approved elevation, and then what we're proposing on the bottom. Predominantly, this building is stone, which was the theme for all of the other buildings in the plaza. And then that dark, you know, sort of black windows and trim work. And so, we're proposing to keep the existing door and blocks, keep the existing stone. Obviously, new shingles on the roof to match the shingles on the rest of the plaza. Go to the next slide. New hardy on the sides of the building. And then, and then, we're on slide 6. And then painting, obviously. So, everything will match in the plaza. We're just not proposing to do the level of construction as far as additions to the front of the building that was previously proposed. So, as far as the materials, you know, the materials will be the same. So, the roof shingles will match everything else that's on the plaza. The signage will match. We're gonna use the hardy materials for the signage. Same with the frame, with the luminal letters. We're using, we're using the existing stones, you know, leaving that there and adding the hardy on the side. And then painting the windows with the black moldings. And then the existing glass will remain. No changes to the lighting. Sofits are gonna change, or stay the same. Everything about this site will stay the same. So, moving on to slide 7. I think there were some questions about the north side of the site. So, it is, I agree, it's a little bit confusing. So, on the existing site, which is the picture at the top, there's a garage door that is used for loading and unloading. And there's a man door in the back. So, those will stay. On the colored elevation, they didn't appear. So, I understand that that was confusing. So, that was really for colors and materials. The door will stay. The man door will stay. And they'll be painted to match the existing colors of the building. The dumpster location, there was an approved dumpster location on the approved site plan back in 2018 that was never implemented. So, it simply needs to be implemented. I think back then, we didn't have details on the dumpster detail. And we utilized this new detail. If you remember, for BOE, there's a picture in the bottom left-hand corner. It's more of a modern, kind of upgraded dumpster detail. So, we're gonna utilize that here, same location. So, that won't change. So, same dumpster closure location, but we now added the detail for that. Okay, moving on to slide 9, which just shows the south side of the building. So, we'll mimic the same as the north side of the building. It'll be hardy on the top portion where the roof is. And then that block will be painted to match the existing colors, same colors as BOE. And then moving on to the next slide, which just summarizes the application materials. So, we did provide you with a cover letter, the application. Unfortunately, we're a full color 1PAF. We believe this application is a type 2 action. We can be too significant impact that's gonna push this over the threshold and a seeker review. But nonetheless, we were required to provide that part 1PAF. We did provide you with the existing site plan that was approved back in 2018. Many of you on the board, so you probably remember that. Then we can move on to the next sheet. This is just a blow-up. This is from slide 12, for those of you who aren't looking. This is just a blow-up of that section of the site plan, which is FEEDs+. So, you can see if it was proposed. The dumpster refuse enclosure area that will, you know, will be built as part of this application. No changes to the lighting. We're on sheet 13, and that's the existing approved lighting plan. So, no modifications to the lighting plan. Same lights that were utilized throughout the site. Moving on to page 14. I know you have a whole agenda, so I'm going quickly. This floor plan shows just a single tenant. There's a single tenant in there now, which is FEEDs+. But the approved site plan showed three tenants. We just wanna reserve the right, the ability to create this into two tenancies. There are two doors there. So, we just want that option to be able to create this into two tenancies. So, that's why we show the elevation has two signs and the two doors. So, again, this is just, moving on to slide 15. This shows the colored elevation for the front of the building and for the north side of the building. And then, proposed elevation is just for the back. And then, oh, sorry, that was the south side. So, the back and the north side where you have that garage door and that man door. And then, just any questions? Obviously, this is FEEDs+. I think everyone knows this is a great asset to Hyde Park. Been there forever. And we wanna try to do whatever we can to try to fix this last building. As you can see from the photos, it's, it needs work. You know, it's got some disease and pets and things that are trying to get tenancy in there. So, we wanna try to clean this up.
Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
So, you addressed most of the comments that we were talking about. So, I'm gonna let our consultant, Sharpway, in first, Ted.
I'm glad to see the sign coming in consistency with the rest of the plaza. That'll be very nice. We have no comments?
No comments?
Yeah, so, I, after our agenda meeting, I emailed Kelly and went through, you know, the things that we discussed at the agenda meeting. And she's updated some things here to address, address that. The other thing that Kelly and I talked about when we talked about it, our agenda meeting, is that the chairman will need to sign, sign something. So, we talked about doing similar to what we did for the BOE, to have like a cover sheet that was specifically referenced in this with the signature blocks on it. And then, I mean, can we just use, as far as the site plan, can they just use the master plan? Or do we have to have Joe do a separate one?
We asked him to, after the call. So, we asked him to do a cover sheet. And then, we were just gonna refer on the cover sheet to the approved site plan, just by reference. Do you want, Ted, do you want like a blow-up of that section, please? Or do you want them to...
I mean, you might be able to do that, like a blow-up of just the small FEEDs+ area, like the site plan part of the master plan for just that FEEDs+ area that shows the proposed dumpster.
Yeah, we asked him to do two sheets. So, we asked him to do a cover sheet and then the site plan. And then, we're into the detail on the sheet. That detail is in here. So, then if you get...
And then references, reference, reference, like the building 3 is depicted on the front.
On the master plan, just reference.
And then the elevations would be attached. So, it would be one, it would be a new set. It's like, well, actually, the elevation is still there. And then the lighting, I'll go back to that set.
The only other thing I saw, Kelly, when I was out there, I forgot to go mention this to you. It's not a big deal, but, you know, the building is long. And so, like the gutter in the front basically splits halfway. Half goes to the south, half goes to the north. The part that goes to the south, when the work was done on the BOE building, they put in a connection, when the roof leader comes down, goes into, you know, a connection that goes right into the storm drain system. I don't know. And then, the half gutter on the north end, just like dumps on it. I don't know when they rehang a gutter, put new gutters, whether they could slope it all to one side and maybe it would be too long.
Okay, you probably hit it in the basin.
It would be, it would be better than they go in and... If they can, they can.
Okay. Victoria, any comments?
Just the same comments FEED that we need an actual site plan that we can approve inside. I don't think that's worth it.
Yeah. Look, we did this before.
Yeah.
I like the BOE example.
He started it. As we did the call with FEED, we reached out to him so he could start that. Joe Markham.
Yes, okay. All right, moving on. Mr. Phil, have you had a chance to review this?
Yeah, certainly.
Any comments?
Not, not much. While there's one tenant, assume that the sign be centered? Or would your, where it says tenant 1, that would be a sign and the rest would be, likely be off-center?
I think it would be the latter. We would put, we would put not center. So, we would put the current tenant on the left side, on right side, wherever, and leave the other side empty. Okay.
Yep. I would say ideally, you'd like to have the signage close to the door where you're actually going in. With tenant 2, both signs in this case are gonna be pretty much above one tenant. But understandable given the existing conditions. So, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Waters.
Well, my comments are dealing with the architecture. So, the architecture is, I, it's just not, it doesn't mirror anything that's in the existing, you know, brackets. Doesn't, it's just, it's just really, you're just facelifting everything that's already there. So, I, you know, I thought, did you receive the drawing that I gave to the supervisor? Yeah, okay. So, I guess I just, you know, it's not, it was just putting a couple dormers on the top. They're overbuilds. They're not costly. And you have to do that work anyway up there. And, you know, I understand the stone thing. I understand the reasons for that. The side block, so I assume it's gonna be painted like the other building. But there's no practices, no architectural details that mirror anything like that's happening on the barber shop or the Verizon or the Mavis or the ready coffee or any of that. So, I definitely have issues with the architecture. So... That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Waters.
Thank you. So, I'm happy to see that you're finally tackling the last, you're tackling the last building on the, on the, this whole project. And I was on the board when we tackled this. And bit by bit, every building, we talk about architecture and dormers and how do we just relieve the long, long linear look of a roof. And I do have a concern about the long linear look of this roof. I am not an architect or a designer, but, and I do respect cost. I just think talking to dormers, there's something to relieve that roof, especially since it can be so dark. It's just, it's a lot of dark linear roof. I'll leave it at that. I'm not gonna try to design a building for it. But I think it needs relief on the roof. Because it's a big change from what we approved. And I'm willing to go with a change, but it is just too much of a change. But, but thank you for picking me out. I'm glad this week's finally happened. Everything we've done that looked better, that looks great. The whole plaza looks great. So, I hope we can do the same here. Thank you very much.
Mr. Alvin.
So, although it is not the original approved elevation from 2018, I do believe it is substantially better than what is currently there. And it is, it is a little far, but it is better. And that's, you know, given the current costs of construction and everything, I do understand the reasoning. And, you know, my, my point is always, is it better than what we currently have? In my opinion, it is. And I'm, I'm okay with it. Waiter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gracielle.
Well, I was on the board when it was approved with the original elevation. That's a really nice building. This building is a good sheet. And I think it's a big improvement. I mean, you know, I get the colossus. I can see what they're trying to do. And we are getting it cleaned up, so I'm okay with it.
Thank you.
So, I would, I would agree with everyone that this is definitely better than what is there. Couple of items that we were talking about. As far as that dormer goes, so what's confusing is I believe the entrance to FEEDs+ right now is on the south side. They had been going to the north side. I think some, I think when you fix up the front, you'll, I think there was an issue with the doors. Something about the...
You know more than I do.
Yeah, because it's confusing. Sign is there. And then you walk up and you're, no, I gotta go down here. Just wondering, what, are you replacing the roof?
Just to, so the shingles will come off and it'll be reshingles. So, it's not getting reframed.
Right. But fresh, fresh shingles.
Fresh shingles, yes. So, those all can't be replaced.
So, my question is about the dormer. Is it possible to extend that so that it's two-thirds of the roof? So, it kind of straddles, goes across both doors? And then the signs could be over the doors that are being used as entrance weights? Or shorten the one so it's over that one entrance? And have another smaller one right over the south entrance? And have those, I just, the two, the two, the two names of the business over one door? Just really, it, it, and I'm hoping that, you know, FEEDs+ is there for a very long time. And so, I guess my question is if, in the meantime, if FEEDs+ couldn't just take that, you know, be centered on that door?
Is that a false dormer?
Yeah. So, yeah, but it's just a...
So, the problem is, is that if FEEDs+ if it's centered, and then someone else comes in, depending upon the size of the side, you know, there's brackets there. There's frames that they're going in. So, if the frame can be centered and then shifted when a new tenant comes in, then we could, we could do that. If, it seems reasonable that we can do that. Let me just check and confirm so I don't speak out of line to see if the sign can be centered over the door until some other tenant potentially comes in.
I think that long would, that would make me much happier.
Well, making the dormers on the top, the shed dormer, smaller, centering it would actually work to your benefit. And then you could put the other piece over the other door. And it would make it proportionate.
Again, all those, it's just adding to the construction.
It's not adding to the construction. You'd have to rip it off anyway. It's not adding to the construction, you'd have to rip it off anyway.
We can agree to disagree.
Well, we can, but I'm telling you that it wouldn't be, because you have to, you're probably just going to have to replace some sheathing up there. So, and, and decided, costs money too. So, you know, I know estimates, so, and I don't know it too, so.
Thank you for looking into that.
Absolutely.
And then my only other comment is, one of the comments that I've heard is, could there be lighting by the doors, could there be sponges next to the doors?
Like the other, like the other...
Yes, because that would be an element from the other, if we bring one in the elements, it's in there.
Yep, okay.
It's also kind of dark back there, if you're going back there at four o'clock in December.
Okay. So, we'll just mimic the same ones under there. The only question that I have is, do we have to redo the photometric plan? Or can we just put, I mean, there are pretty minimal lighting there, so to redo the photometric plan is...
Maybe you could just put like catalog, catalog cuts or something that show, you know, the spread. I think most of them have spreads.
Okay, so we'll just do that on the doors, okay, put on oversize of the windows, okay.
Yeah, that would be great, but, sorry. All right, so, do we hear any other comments? So, we are, let me get this. Room, how many, Victoria?
So, the application is going to be referred to kind of site at some point, but it's not complete enough to go to county planning until we get, you know, the complete set.
And if you could find out maybe the details about the roof and the lighting, that might help also with the planning.
So, if we were to resubmit prior to the next planning board meeting, can this board authorize it to be sent to county planning upon receipt? The only reason I'm bringing that up is this approval expires August 24. And so, we've been kind of diligent about doing extensions, but there was no, since we're here before you, there's no reason to do an extension. We kind of got hung up a little bit on the application materials on the beginning of the project, so lost a month. So, if the board is allowing us to send this over to county planning once...
We've done this before.
So, the board could make a motion to authorize Cynthia to send, to refer the application as soon as...
The updated materials are received.
But that, you know, would be that Cynthia decided they submitted everything.
Right, right. Well, can I have...
How many in that motion?
Could I get a second?
Thank you, Chris.
Okay.
Good luck with that, Cynthia. And we'll help her out.
We generally do a cover letter, so we always do a cover letter. And then we do all the comments on the table, so we'll do that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm no...
Are you? Yeah, we have one, we have one.
No.
Is there a public hearing required for this application? Or is that something that the board can waive, given the fact that we've had a campus public hearing?
The board can waive a public hearing upon recognition of the zoning administrator, which shows that when there are minor project changes, we don't have that recognition at this point?
So, if that's something, I don't, if that's something that the zoning administrator is going to waive, and she could let us know, if it's not, then could we schedule the public hearing?
We, so, we could, but, what would you have a seven to?
So, I think it was a seven, and then a twenty first.
Has answering here, we can hear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, we don't have the plan set.
That's my point, is that we can schedule it, but we don't have, what would we, what would we talk on?
I thought when you scheduled the public hearing, you had to have your documentation, right?
So, if it's submitted, we can set it on the seventh or the twenty first, where by that time we'll have, hopefully...
We should have had something that had sent to county planning.
Is that enough time, between the seventh and the twenty first to get, I don't know, get the public hearing notification from due times, and we didn't get...
If we set it tonight, I'd have to get it out tomorrow.
No, no, not set it out.
Right, I need to do it the day after the meeting.
Okay.
So, we can do the twenty first.
I'd have to do the eighth to get it together.
But she didn't...
Oh, yeah, this is fine, if it's tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, so that's what we, we'll wait till the seventh to set the public hearing.
And then lastly, do we need to identify that this is a ten to action? Is there a secure decision on this?
Yeah, I mean, we can put that in for...
I would say, yeah, we'll reconfirm, we'll... Because this is an amended site plan, correct, so we'll just reconfirm.
Okay, very good. Okay, very well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for, for giving us the hard comments, and thank you for looking into the design issues.
We'll do.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. Next, I'm going to go on, we have the public hearings.
Yay!
Okay. We're going to have a new public hearing scheduled for Kelly Holdings to block minor subdivision on South Quaker Lane.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a patience.
We look the same, I think.
So, before we get going, can I get a motion to open the...
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We are in public hearing. Good evening, we're at the home stretch.
Yes, we are.
Want to give us a quick update on, on how we got to this point?
Yeah, sure, hi, thanks for your time, everybody. I'm the project surveyor here, John Herbert. Kelly Holdings, Mr. Scott Wardhouse has an acreage on South Quaker Lane. We surveyed, there's an existing dwelling on it, that he's improved and wants to subdivide, make a lot, about two and a half acres. Sell the house, doesn't want to be a landlord, and keep the remainder of the acreage for recreational use. We've got our proposed conservation area. Wetlands, I couldn't take care of everything, last thing I think, the site distance was a, was a question. And Mr. Coward's not out there, he's D P W. And I think I was the last, last thing we added.
And we have it okay from the county.
Yeah.
That there's, that there's, that there's an adequate location in the event that a lot, this one is a big lot too.
One.
In the event that lot one is ever like developed for a residential lot, then at least there was a spot for a driveway, and they confirmed that.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that's it, not shouting.
Yeah, and I know there's been discussions about the, marking out the conservation easements, and how to do, and how best to do that, so we'll, we'll talk about that.
Okay.
Okay. Ted?
The corners of the conservation easement, I believe, on another project, we did four by four posts with a marker on top, or a wall, or something that's did that defines where the, where the open areas began. And it would need to be around the furthest extent of the block.
And the resolution, and the resolution has that, has a couple of positions that note that, you know, the style, and had another book there.
I think we're still searching for the perfect alignment marker.
For a conservation...
So, if you find it, please let us know. But we have some, we have some ideas on it. Any other comments? No? Megan, about the...
I don't have a comment.
Pete?
Well, anything that, you know, we talked about on the agenda calls, we incorporated it to the resolution and the conditions.
Okay. And we're aware of the, you're aware of the recreation fee? Have I just talked about the recreation fee?
Yeah, I mean, we're creating, we're creating like a new lot, so.
Yeah, if you don't think we've heard about this.
Well, this is in the resolution.
It is.
It's in the resolution side.
Right. So, the way that state law works is that you either have to make a determination and find a spot on the subdivision plaque for appropriate recreational areas, or you pay the fee. And for something like this, where, yeah, it's, the fee is what gets charged.
You're not creating a neighborhood, you're not a landlord.
That's set by, it's a fee that's legislatively set, so you're just saying that you're creating a lot, and then the fee.
Right, I just make sure that the state law is not agreed.
The state law authorizes the town to set recreations. Okay, so it's authorized by the state, implemented by the town, and then the planning board intervenes.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any other comments over there? Pete? Victoria?
I mean, we have two conditions, we talked about the post, what is drafted right now is that it would be a wooden post with a plaque stating subdivision conservation protection area, restrictions apply at each of the corners, just so that someone walking would notice where the conservation easement area is, where they get moved by accident. And that the zoning administrator and the planning board engineer have to sign off on the final design for those, so they can work out what they're going to look like offline, and they'll decide if it meets the normal standards.
Quick question, this is surrounded by stone wall fence, all the way around the border here.
You put a new stuff on the stone wall, I thought.
Well, we indicated where you went here, but it's like a lot of something different.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on stone wall around the corner.
Why don't you come up with, I think you could get, you could get like an iron like post that you drive in, and maybe, I think you can get a sign company to make some cheap, I shouldn't say cheap, but...
Inexpensive.
Inexpensive, thank you. Inexpensive like signs that you could just post on the entry.
Because there was an opening, right?
That's why, yeah, that's why we...
You kind of put it in there.
Yeah. It's in a recent property area, we, you know, extended it, you know, out of this far away in the walls. On the trail, you know, to be coming through.
Yeah, we'll work it out some, that works, that works for you and works for...
Yeah, it makes sense, yeah.
So, over here, Mr. Tull, do you have any...
Listen, no.
Nothing.
Sounds good.
Yes.
Sounds good, no comment.
Stone?
No comment.
Mr. Garcia?
None.
All right, we do have a resolution prepared tonight. Thankful that Victoria walked through some of the, some of the detail there, but we really didn't notice that stone wall right there, so that's, that's... And we're looking, we're trying to figure out, you know, if you're walking in there, how would you see it? So, that's...
Yeah.
It's helpful.
Oh, we have, great, we do need to make sure no one's in the public conference.
Right, oh, I'm sorry. And then we call the public to speak on this application.
Oh, well, excellent. Good, good action.
Yes, thank you. If you kind of would mind moving over, or just sitting back there, and letting the board come up and speak.
My...
Thank you.
It was new to Dylan.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, come on up.
Good job. I mean, do please state your name, and...
Justin, Josephine Dispatch. We're at two or two South Quaker Lane, we have water right on the private. Before I agree with it, it's going to be a hunting area, a club, I don't know what is.
What is it?
What actually is going in next to my property.
If we don't know, why is it going in there?
It's right next to, right there.
Yeah, understood.
What is it?
What is it?
I believe that he's just using, he's using it, he's not building on it?
Maybe Mr. Coward can answer.
Yeah, there you go, Mr. Coward can answer.
All I'm planning to do, I renovated the house in public, I saw how beautiful it is, I upgraded what it was. I'm going to use the property for recreation purposes, like anybody else that owns property, and, and I don't want to be a landlord, so I figured I would renovate the house, which is beautiful, and sell, I could have tore it down, and then the number didn't, in my mind, be saying, let's renovate the house, it's a nineteen, if anybody wants to buy a house, it's going to go for sale. And that's, that's the end of it, nothing worth saying.
We just...
Well, that's on the other side of the road, where your proposal is right on the other side of the wall.
Yeah, we're on...
Where I live.
You're on the, right next door.
Yeah, you're right, what is happening?
The proposal? Someone off the house. There's no, no...
There's no plan strengthening the house.
Just to create a new lot for the house.
Well, the rumor of the high burden town is going to be a hunting floor.
No, you have to come, you have to come to this board for like approval, and that's probably not even like allowed in the zoning.
Okay, but we just, that's what we heard.
This is just a subdivision.
There's a junkyard in the area.
It's on the side lane.
Just vacant, just vacant.
It's not going to be creating any kind of commercial or whatever business on this property, for my purpose, my own purpose.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
My son and I like to hunt, and I was back in the back, turkey hunting.
Right, right, yeah.
That's all I'm doing.
Well, you could see where the wall was in the back and the trails.
There's a lot of... I found a lot of illegal hunters hunting on the property.
Yes, yeah.
And I plan on killing them all.
Right. Also, we have a lot, not a lot, but people use our, we have a trail behind our house, has a nice little hill on it.
We have the trail, we have the trail.
And sometimes people come with their claws and stuff, I don't know where they come from, but...
I don't see any evidence of that on the property. I do know there's been local aggressive, aggressive, they've been hunting on the property, and I told them no. I don't want people on my property, I don't want that liability. I don't want it posted at all, I call the other property around it a posted. I'm planning on getting rid of a lot of garbage, pushing on the property, enhancing the property, because there's a lot of old garbage in the back end of the property, old tires.
Yeah, yeah, yep, that's true.
I'm planning on, on the conservation side, cleaning it up, bringing it back to where it was.
Great.
Which is a beautiful piece of property.
Yeah, we got, we got through it.
No, no, no.
Thank you for coming out, though, this is, this is the purpose of a public hearing.
Actually, because, I mean, there are people that, you know, want to come hard on the area.
Yeah.
That's... You know, I mean, yeah, my animals are all used to hearing.
Yeah, so are mine, yeah.
But I thought maybe even war guns would come.
Yeah, okay.
Well, thank you so much for coming out, I appreciate that.
Thank you for answering the questions.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this application?
Oh, thank you very much, thank you. Then we should look at part two of the E A S.
Was this set earlier?
We need it presented today, but I might have just went to Michael.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, so walk through this, please. Walk through that set.
So, oh, so this is part two of the E A S. It's a series of questions that just ask whether there's going to be environmental impacts.
Yeah, I'm happy, or you don't...
Yeah, it just walked through.
Okay, part two impact assessment is completed by the lead agency. Question one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No. Two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of usable land? No. Will the proposed action compare the character or quality of existing land? No. Four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Five, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or in existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walking? No. Six, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Seven, will the proposed action impact existing public... Seven, will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or public-private wastewater treatment utilities? No. Eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No. Nine, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, e.g. wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna? No. Ten, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Eleven, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No.
Okay, so now that's in the resolution, so we close the hearing and then the resolution will incorporate all of it.
Okay, so can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries? All right, now, I believe Ms. Watson has this resolution. Yes, I do. All right. Resolution to adopt a determination of savings and grants final subdivision approval, Calley Holding, July seventeenth, twenty twenty four, Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero six A. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby adopts a negative declaration finding that the project will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared. Be it further resolved that the planning board finds that a proper case exists for requiring parks and playgrounds to be suitably located on the plat, and that a park of adequate size cannot be located on the site, and the applicant shall be required to pay a fee for each new lot as set forth in the town's pre-schedule to be deposited into the town recreation fund. Be it further resolved that the planning board finds that the proposed open space conservation area contains federal and state wetlands and is worthy of conservation. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby conditionally approves the final plat and authorizes the chair or his authorized designate to sign the final plat after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees in Esper. Two, payment of a recreation fee of five thousand dollars for one new residential lot. Three, approval by the attorney to the planning board and the town attorney of an open space deed restriction over the conservation area shown on the final plat, pursuant to section ninety six dash nine of the town code, providing the town the right, but not the obligation, to enforce the deed restriction. The deed restriction shall be recorded with the Dutchess County Clerk prior to filing of the plat unless it is accompanied by an undertaking from the applicant's attorney promising that the deed restriction will be recorded with the Dutchess County Clerk promptly after the subdivision plat is filed. Four, installation of wooden post survey markers, each with a plaque stating subdivision conservation protection area, comma, restrictions apply, designating each of the corners of the conservation area. Number five, approval by the zoning administrator and planning board engineer of design specifications for the conservation area survey markers. Six, permission to file from the Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health. Seven, revision of the final plat to include the following note, quote, wetlands shown taken from G I S data. Prior to any future development of subdivision of Lot One, the federal and New York State Department of Environmental Conservation wetlands and buffer shall be flagged and certified by their respective agency having jurisdiction. Be it further resolved that prior to the zoning administrator authorizing the issuance of a building permit for any structure on Lot One shown on the subdivision plat, the applicant shall provide zoning administrator with proof of recordation of the approved conservation deed restriction. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays, any extensions? Motion carries? Thank you. All right. Very nice, very nice working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you want to run out? Yeah. I got a freezing in here, I'm going to get a jacket. So next up is sofa additional dwelling units. Ms. Watson, we stepped out for a couple minutes and grabbed her jacket.
Okay.
It's cold.
Sorry.
Trying to wick this up?
Yep.
Can we still have four of them?
Okay. So I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Andrews.
Good evening. I was here, I guess it was, well, it seems like a long time ago because of the holiday. This application, or the proposed project, is to add two new single-family dwellings to an existing parcel of land that consists of approximately a hundred acres. Um, there's an existing single-family dwelling on it, uh, existing driveway, um, that is going to be used for access to the two new houses. The fire district has signed off on the adequacy of the driveways for emergency vehicles. Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health, health department seems a lot easier, have, has approved the well location for the two new houses and, uh, the onsite wastewater disposal system. I don't think there's too much else I can say.
Nope, and you were gracious enough to walk the site with Michael and my son.
Correct.
That was very nice.
And your driver.
And my driver, yes, driving with Stacy, yep. Thank you very much, always lovely, it was really nice to see the, the site and.
Now.
And the improvements.
All right. You could actually figure out where you were.
You're not kidding. And I didn't come out with bramble scratches and mud all over me, so, no, it was, it was actually really beautiful and, um, I'm, I'm so happy for, for the surface, because they've done a phenomenal job. Okay, so, all right.
Anybody in the audience?
I can get my jacket.
Oh. The crisis. Well, maybe just get him up and walking there, if you have that much more. Uh, so, I would like to.
What? I have, I have more to pour into my trunk, oh, okay, I don't have any.
No, I, I'm in my cupboard, it's pouring, so I skipped the idea.
I just thought it didn't happen.
Oh, no, it's pouring now, okay. Um, so I'm going to go around first and just see if there's any outstanding items.
I, I, I don't think there are.
Okay, let me, let me poll the, poll the consultants, Ted, are there any comments?
I believe Pete and I still need to do a final on the progress of the control permit.
On what?
For open semi control permit.
Okay. You've been working on those two, that, throughout the process, right?
We didn't have any comments.
Okay. Pete?
No.
Victoria?
Uh, no comment, we have a resolution prepared, if the board is ready to act.
Uh, if, if at all possible, I'd like to get a little bit of guidance on the condition of, in the resolution, the draft one that I.
So I believe those three conditions?
Yeah. Right. I don't know when would be appropriate to discuss those.
Um, if you don't mind, we continue the poll, and if there's any public, Eric? Or public comment? Mr. Tubbell, does he have a comment? Ms. Watson?
No comment.
Ms. Watson, no comment. Mr. Alvin?
No comment.
Mr. Garcia? Would anybody in the public like to speak on this application? Okay.
So, um, the, there are three, there are three conditions on this draft resolution. The first one I understand, tender of wolf season, I've got it. And I'd like to jump to the third one, because that one really has me totally floored. I do not understand, I, I, I need an explanation as to what you're looking for. And the reason why I'm totally floored is, uh, oh, gee whiz, you know, I had these the first go around, but.
You know, we can, we can just stop the conversation, because Ted is upon that we don't need to have this calculation on the plan upon further review, right? Yeah, so.
Okay, so you can skip that. Or delete it, whatever you want.
We have a scan, we have a scan.
It certainly require on subdivision.
We're wasting ounces in there.
Thank you, thank you, Ted, I was just wondering, because, and I can understand from a site plan perspective versus a subdivision.
Right, exactly.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, so, now we'll go to number two.
Okay.
Now, for the very first time, since I've been doing this, and this is the next to the last time that you're going to see me do the project.
No.
Yep.
Say it again, so.
Yep, um, because I'm really going to be totally retarded.
You mean you're tired?
It's the first time that I've ever had a submittal that went through without any changes to the original plan that we submitted. Very first time.
I knew you shouldn't.
I think I finally got it.
It's definitely time to retire.
In any event, I'm a little bit confused about this cover sheet and everything, uh, that is going to have to be developed. I, I don't get it, because I have, I made, made a copy. Yeah, that's the one. Boy, aren't you good.
I'm good, I knew where you were headed.
Well, you told, now you told me that I made it. This is the very first, this is the very first, uh, sheet, there's three sheets to this thing. And there's a list of drawings, just like my approval, and there's a resolution for the planning board, and of course, the owner applicant's consent notes are, have been signed on, on all the copies, the paper copies that, that were, were submitted originally. So I'm, I'm a little confused on what this cover sheet's supposed to do. Because it's just going to be a blank piece of paper, basically.
So, I'm sure you know what the cover sheet is. This was a comment that we received that we put on, uh, the resolution, because normally we like to see all the sheets bound by a title sheet, so that all this information isn't squished onto the, the following sheets. In this particular case, there's really not much happening. If you feel comfortable that the sheets are readable as they are, you can forward the document for the cover sheet.
Okay, I'll move to poll my board. Okay. Mr. Garcia, what do you think about the cover sheet? Is it required? Okay. Mr. Alvin?
I am okay with the agreement.
Okay.
It's a retirement gift.
You guys are being way too accommodating. You gotta at least tweak them a little.
No, I too, the draft resolution tweaked me.
He's, he hasn't done number one yet.
We want to make this perfect for him, so.
Yeah, we, yeah, it's got to be a real, it's got to be a real first, you know? Three strikes in a row. I can read it all right.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a resolution prepared, and that's one condition. Which is, we're not getting rid of that one.
But, but before we, before you keep going, there are, do you have enough copies of this plan set for, for signing?
I, I don't have any, except for the final copy. They, they get distributed to the board.
Oh, okay, so, so you need some more sets, right?
We'll, we'll communicate.
How many?
I have to look at the list to see who they, who gets this one.
The sign.
Yep.
Okay.
Actually, Ted, is this my line?
It's not, uh, it's not something.
Oh, thank goodness, it's site plan, yes, sorry. It's a long night.
Yep, it's quite all right.
I'm going to retire early, I'm going to go retire early.
So who has this resolution? Oh, wait a second, can I, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion, just close the public hearing.
Resolution to grant conditional site plan approval, stofa multiple single-family dwellings, resolution number twenty twenty four dash eighteen. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves the site plan set and authorizes the chair or his authorized designate to sign the site plan set after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees in Esper.
Third, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or extensions? Motion carries?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And we'll, we'll see you the next time.
There you go.
No next time, this is your turn.
No. One more.
Make it a good one.
It's always going to be.
I'm looking for you.
Blue, blue left.
This one?
Blue left, yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda, sorry. A bit man.
Crofting, but the, 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 they're like.
We're going to open if anything is in the next.
Parish fails on the next one, can I get a motion to open the public hearing? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries? Okay, we've been asked by the applicant if we could open a adjournment, so I believe he wanted number seven?
Correct.
Yeah.
Did we have any comments, if you want to make on this application?
Luke told me earlier that he feels confident in permanent transportation and is waiting on the D C, and he's working on revisions, but Pete had it asked him, and Armitage and Bonnie also had a revision on that, so he's going to work on that.
Other than that?
Other than that, right.
Okay. All right, I need, um, I'm just going to ask anybody here who have any comments on this application. Can I get a motion to adjourn? I'm sorry, is anybody in public who would like to?
Okay, so, can you make any noise before you go for a walk?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, please, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
For the seventh, correct?
It's the seventh, correct.
Thank you.
There's no public hearing, there are no public comments. Next item on the agenda is the Byrd Avenue Coffee Shop.
You can go, you know.
There you go. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Terry, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, um, where we're at is, uh, we're still waiting on the D O T, we've been back and forth with the D O T. They wanted the alignment of our intersection with Frankel Road, which M J Engineering did. They wanted us to do some site visibility in reference to, uh, Frankel Road across the street, which they did. They, it, it had for additional turn, uh, some more analysis, turn radiuses, back and forth, so to make a long story short, that basically Dennis from M J Engineering talked to Bill Rose yesterday, and they came up with, they're comfortable with the concept, they have to put some notes, they have to do some more stuff and some tweaking, so, um, I asked M J Engineering and Bill Rose if we can get some type of conceptual letter or something stating that, and he says that the D O T does not do that anymore. It's going to be, hey, listen, when you get there, you get there. So basically, we're asking to have a adjournment to next month's meeting, and hopefully we'll have our D O T, uh, letter in hand to move forward.
Congratulations on working with them to this point. You know, I mean, it, that's.
No, it's, it's work in progress, you listen, they have, they, I've, I've been pushing them, they have a lot of applications, there's a lot of things going on. I don't have to tell you, everybody's shorthanded, they don't have no manpower, a lot of the senior guys are all retiring.
All of them.
The younger generation's home watching TV, and there's nobody to take their position, and that's where we're at.
Geez, that's not what you said yesterday.
What a difference it makes.
So, uh, the only other, the only other couple of things that we had is I know that, um, Mike's going to submit something, because we did put the, uh, location of where the generator was going to be, because we didn't have that on the map, um, and he was tweaking some of the lighting, um, stuff that needed to be tweaked, um, to get that back in, and he said he's going to get it submitted to Cynthia. We did, uh, have some discussion on colors, um. We did have some discussion on colors and we took a poll and our good friend Michael Dupree lost his blue color.
Oh, he lost his blue.
So we have the colors that are picked out for the face of the building, the ones that have the dots on or the two, two contrasts that are the lighter and the darker, that are these, these two here. We got samples and they, they were set down, they painted on a board so that when Michael Verda comes next month, we could actually, actually have them for you.
Okay. Anything else?
That's about it.
Okay. Go around, Ted, any comments?
No comment.
Pete. Victoria, any comments? Mr. Tull, any comments?
Just, he said he's working on the lighting plan and hopefully it will be a little easier to read when it comes back this time.
The way he explains it to me is the schematic for that lighting plan gets sent out to a company that actually does it, that are supplying the fixtures and it's.
Yeah, it was so, trying to read it, the schedule wasn't matching the signals and I wanted to plan and we were missing some of the spec sheets with followers and things like that.
And I think that was brought up last time and he did make corrections, but he said, "Hey, do you need me to come?" And I said, "Hey, listen, I spend enough money, I don't need you to come back." We're gonna adjourn next month anyway, so.
A lot of things are moving with DOT slowly. That's all.
Mr. Waters.
No comment.
You happy with the colors?
I'm happy with the color.
There you go. Ms. Lawson.
No comment.
Okay, Mr. Oliver.
Something you'd add?
I think that was, okay, all of our comments. I don't have any additional comments, I'm just really happy and somewhat surprised that you were able to get a, a great verbal agreement, you know, so.
Yeah, I had it two months in a row.
Would anybody in the public like to speak on this application? This is the Violet Avenue Coffee Shop.
I'm just glad 9G started to see some action.
There you go.
The stepchild.
This is the action. This place is the action. John, when would you like us to adjourn this, the seventh or the 21st?
I'm hoping the seventh, if that could be possible.
We can accommodate you on that. Take a motion to adjourn this public hearing to all the seven.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now we are on to other business. Bellfield, do you need phase two B? Come on up. Good evening. So I know you've sent us some updated information and drawings on your project. Some, it's exciting, but it's also some change.
Yes.
Perhaps you'd like to walk us through?
Sure, thank you very much for having us tonight and the opportunity to present. So is that okay?
I don't know where you're gonna put it. We could move you all further out.
So this is the original, right?
Yeah, so Larry Hudereau with Bellfield, Jared, Tom Mulholland, CEO, T-Brex, and Larry Tellatier. We've got the whole, whole team. Yes, so just for context here, we met prior to making the seven two submittal with Michael, Pete, Ted, and kind of presented what our thoughts were, they said great, you know. We decided to do a workshop first and then get any feedback and then in three weeks, eight, six, make a submittal so that we can take the feedback, respond, and then be on the planning board's agenda for eight, 21. As you know, this up there is the approved phase two site plan. It's phase two, we came back in last year with phase two A, which is to the right, twelve townhouses there, and that was approved this past March. And the development team should have the building plans done in the next couple of weeks, at least submitted for building permit. So things are moving forward with that, of course, they're for sale product, you gotta deal with the AD's office and so we'll order to do all that. That, let me go to the next one. You might remember this, but this color-coded map is a phasing plan and so we had to be scrolled down a little bit more here. So the whole idea is that the phases have a balance out in development ratio of residential versus non-residential. And so that's what that chart is on the bottom. The colors represented different phases. What we did here is we're showing a revised two B, we're focusing on the Village Green and so we hatched the area that would be the revised phase two B. You can see that it takes part of two C, it doesn't take all of what two B was, but you kind of see what it's doing there. What it is doing is everything centered around the Village Green. So what this shows is that red dash line is what we're proposing as the development area for the apartments. And the apartments are shown as building 100 and 200. The previous plan had the apartments in yellow. So you can see there's one starting right. Yeah, that's building one, building two, that's 1400, which was the amenity area, that's 300, 400, 500, and 600. What we're doing here is we're eliminating 600, 500, 400, 300, and we're pulling everything into that angle. We are doing interesting things here and I'll show you that in a little bit. Down on the bottom there, City Winery, is still there, that's kind of anchored on the west side of the Village Green. Building 1100 remains exactly the same as approved. Building 1200, we wanted to give it more frontage on the Village Green, so we extended that up to Main Street. Building's the same, other than being longer. What's driving this is we have a development group that expressed a high interest in working with us. And when we met with Michael, we did tell him who it was, it was Zuro. These guys are very good, they work all over the country and they're working, they just finished a project on one of my projects in Flemington, Mass. And I told the board this probably years ago, 3,000 acre master plan where I master-planned it and was involved in it for five years. These guys built this project on that project. I'm going there in a couple of weeks to look at it, just to. But they're, they, what they do, they're very good at knowing what their tenants want as far as walkability, they know what they want as far as amenities. And that's centered around, you know, two things, making sure whatever amenities they provide are walkable. So in other words, the previous plan, you'd actually have to get out of building 600, 500, 400, 300, 200, or 100 to get to the amenity area. Their, their concept is you can, you can walk to it from within the building. The other thing that, that they sent around is making the parking very accessible to the unit. So what you'll see is that we are presenting a parking garage wrap, where we actually wrapped the building around a five-deck garage, you don't even see it because the building is wrapped around it. But what it does do is it gets the, the residence is right there to the unit. They don't have to, you know, park outside and walk up or, or park, you know, down on the podium and go up, you can actually drive to the floor where your unit is. So they're, they, they come into the market, they, they know what their tenants want and they have various processes. This is the job management on the plans.
Does that have the wrapped parking?
That is a podium, actually. They did a podium and it's all underneath that deck there and that, they prefer not to do podiums, they are hard to do, you have pipes coming down through them and it's a difficult build, but wrapped is more preferred. So this building 100 and 200 fit within the previously approved 100, 200, and building 1400 fits in that footprint. And you can see the garage is in the middle with the wrap and they center around the north and the south courtyard. The north courtyard will have the pool amenities, the south courtyard will be a landscape amenity. I did mention amenities, they, again, they, they really researched the market and they do amenitize the project. This is planned to have, you can see, 14,000 square feet of leasing and amenity. That can be anything from a library to an exercise room to any, any number of things, whatever the market is, if you try. City Winery has gotten smaller, I know you probably don't see that, but they were initially, last time we were here, was 18,000 square feet. And an existing second story, so now it's shrinking down to 10,000 square feet. It fits the site better, it's easier to grade, it's much more manageable. 1100 stays the same, 1200 is a little longer. Oh, yeah, yeah, the, so code-wise, right, developmental code defines what parking needs to be, so you take the square footage times thousand, you know, five spaces per thousand square feet. In order to get the parking density, we do provide parking on the wall right there. I'm gonna lower that. The other one. That has sidewalk access. This is something we're kicking around internally, we didn't want to show it to you, but you can see the difference, what we did here is we pulled building 1200 up to the Village Green, it's, we mirrored building 1100 and we just feel like this. Now, we will lose square footage and units on it, but we just think that it works a lot better.
What are you doing with all the space that was previously like an extension of the main street? Does not need built?
No, 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 it's the next phase.
So those buildings that involve the yellow ones?
No, that's gonna be open space, that's the old buildings, we consolidated those into one building. That's all, that's all open space.
That was not Main Street. That was the role of buildings, it must be on Main Street, so. Main Street stays.
Yeah, Main Street stays, but these, these guys are not.
It did work a little better for your grading fight.
Yes, grading and rock. And this right here, it's parking remains and we're likely to continue the parking over here. But these buildings will be out. Main Street's still there. So we had our renderer, you know, look at the building, we build a Revit model and the Revit model, we send that to the renderer and they, and they render it. Now, the way we get to the number of units is we go to five stories. So we were, we presented that, we do know that that's, you know, we have to go to the town board to get that modified. But one thing we did here, which is important to know, is along Main Street, you can see where we don't take the five stories all the way across, but in the courtyard, we dipped it down to two. So that's two stories there, it gets a lot of light into the courtyard and the view's out. So everybody's pretty excited about, you know, the, the approach there because again, along the elevation, not looking at a continued four or five-story building, has a nice break there, both in the, in the north and the south.
Yeah, and this is not a final elevation, you see, there's two walls, don't have any windows, that's a big area of windows. This is, this is a bit rushed to get out.
Massive.
Exactly.
Yes.
But in this structure, you can see we can increase space where buildings 300 and 400 were. And this creates the impression perhaps that the new buildings are very large and are going deeper than the buildings went before, but that's not true. These, this building, building 100 and 200 take up exactly the same space as the buildings that were there before, but we think the best advantage of this is to actually complete all of the buildings around the Village Square. So we start off with something that's really complete. And it's also very beneficial to have the residents that will be the customers of the commercial buildings and retail buildings in place. And this is an even better view that shows what the Village Square is going to look like and what, and what the buildings will look like at street level because I think when you're taking a bird's eye view, you, because you can see so high, depending on view, that's a little prejudicial in the sense that it's not what a pedestrian would see.
The square footage of this building is less than the square footage that was approved just because the units were too big for the market. These guys know the market and scale it appropriately. So again, this is you looking, looking east through the Village Green.
I think we're standing, might be from, are you sitting in the corner?
Yep. This, this shows the planning that we did, you know, Bs, you know, As are one, Bs are two, Cs are three. You can see on the hallway next around the garage.
And they'll, they'll show the entries into the corridors?
Yeah, yeah, the other thing I wanted to point out, Chair, if you do the site plan? Because this is something we spoke about with phase two, is that you can see where the staging is for move-in and trash. So we've got one on the north, one on the south. All that is designed to work with firetruck accessibility, access to that. And then this, there it is, right there, compactor, move-in, trash truck, so all that is just brought out and understood. Again, so this is. Again, so this is level four. So level four, obviously, it is going to be open down on the bottom by levels four and five. That's level one. You've got the leasing there on the left. Three, that's the amenity deck, so we'll use the rooftop deck there. And then, of course, that's open on the west side or the bottom side. The, one few more minor things, the development ratio, this has been loaded with residential, kick-off the project, you know, the rooftops are needed to get the commercial in. And so the development ratio, even though the square footage has gone down compared to the others as far as, you know, volume, it looks like it'd be 89.3 or 90% resi in this phase and 10% commercial. Now, that includes the City Winery and the commercial retail space underneath buildings 1100 and 1200. And that, of course, would need the town board for.
For a temporary allowance to exceed the ratio, subject, of course, to always maintaining the overall ratio, there are provisions and the approvals that allow for that.
I'm just curious, so it's by phase that we calculate the ratio?
Yes.
For the overall, what does that do?
Overall, we're making the same, 60/40 remaining the same.
Right.
It's just how we're getting there.
Building the residential first.
No, I have no understanding, but we already have a hotel. So I'm just wondering, what's built along with this, what's approved and this?
It's accumulated.
Yes, what would that?
We would need a town board authorization to temporarily exceed the ratio even factoring in the hotel.
Okay.
And we'll present what the square footage ratios are, including the hotel, when we submit that same drawing there, then we'll have the ratio, development ratios on the bottom.
Yep, okay.
But this ratio is just for 2B?
Yes.
So 90/10?
No, 60/40 remains.
The code?
It's just how we get there. Because the next phase is going to be more retail.
I understand, but for 2B, it's going to be 90/10?
Yes.
Right now, we're 100%.
I see it.
But the townhouses are factored in too.
Yeah, townhouses.
Or a ratio, social rest has squeezed a little bit up the capital.
That's why I was asking for what's been approved and or not. We haven't built yet, but.
Okay.
All right.
So again, I think other than the market factor is very important, but I think equally important is to have in this phase, the completion of full build-out around the village square. I mean, it really establishes the mixed-use community. It gives everyone something to, a reason to visit Bellfield, make it better known in the community and also for both tenants and potential residents in future phases. It really makes it there there.
Yes.
There was a lot of necessity of walking in the original plan. That was certainly a worthy plan, but in many ways, we think this is better, especially as a start to the project because the garage eliminates some surface parking. I think there's enough parking to accommodate just about one space per unit.
The parking garage as shown there is 354 spaces. That's 1.3 spaces per unit. The cost, 1.5. So the balance of the surface parking would be to the south, goes to lots easier there.
And.
Would the commercial users get to use the garage above, you go to City Winery or to the shopping?
No, nobody would.
Where will the commercial, the shoppers park?
They will park in the loop.
Green.
Along Main Street, in the loop right there, around there.
That green.
And again, we'll show that we've got all the parking ratios in that.
And the City Winery customers also will be heavy users of the RBD. It's actually very close to City Winery. We have sidewalks that walk right up there and they could also use that parking for the commercial on the ground for 1200 and 1300.
And that's from our, when you go back to the Phase Two plan, that is planned to be parking.
So I want to thank you for explaining all that and for bringing me extra visuals because I had a very hard time with just the boxes. It was not sinking in at all, what you were proposing. I was picturing something like the Lucky Platte building in City McKipsey. This is big, gigantic. So these visuals are very helpful. And your discussion about the parking garage is something I've never heard before.
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
But it is still very new to me, so I'm just absorbing everything. So if you don't mind, I'd like to go and ask my consultants over here. Ted, any comments?
No comment.
Okay.
He has no additional comments.
Okay, Pete.
No, the only, I mean, we discussed this when you guys came into the meeting and it's very appropriate that we're sitting here in the firehouse, but you obviously got to get with the fire department sooner rather than later, just to go over, you know, the plan before you get too far down the road.
We started the conversation with.
Yeah, we've been emailing about.
Okay, cool, good. All right. That's all.
Okay, excellent point though.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Victoria. They are proposing something that, oops, a bit different, but.
Yeah, I mean, my concern is we had a concept plan for an agri-hurd that was approved and they moved away from it a little bit when you approved the site plan. And now, you know, the board's going to have to decide whether this still fits with the concept plan or whether the town board's going to have to amend the concept plan for this. Is it within that or not?
Now, the last time we did that, we did a lot of work with the concept plan. It was a collaborative effort between the planning board and the town board. The town board ultimately has the authority to approve the concept plan, right?
Correct.
And so who determines if this is different enough from an overall concept? How do we determine that?
There are a lot of standards in the approvals and it's for the idea of congruency with the approved concept plan. That's a function that was specifically delegated to the planning board by the town board at the time of the concept approval. So there's going to be discussions, obviously, of consistency and what that means. And this is going to be something that involves attorneys for the planning board, for the town board, because blanking the other, the approval of the Phase 2B, there is some approvals in each board and there may be joint meetings of both boards. I think it would be very helpful if we will give you in our next submission, perhaps some sheer overlays that will make it easier to see just how these buildings are being replaced because it does take a lot of time to get, first of all, back to refresh your recollection of exactly what it was.
Yes, what we had.
And then to see what is substituting and then consider both the form and the substance and the function that's going to perform in this space. But we think this is fulfilling the same purposes. It's certainly units, residential units that were already in there. And I think if, what I noticed specifically in evaluating the two plans is the Phase 2B that was approved featured the core of the village in Main Street, the buildings that were on either side of Main Street. And to some extent, the buildings that were on the southern end, 1400, 1800.
Yeah, this right here, right, is where 100, 200 go. This remains the same, except we extended it up.
Extended it up a little bit.
But you see, we're now making a much more uniform streetscape of that building, so it really integrates much more.
These go away. This goes away, this goes away, this goes away, this goes away, but Main Street remains.
So the focal point is the Village Green, maybe?
Yes.
As your first pass.
This farm stays here, does not go away.
And I'd like to circle, like I had incorporated in the entry into the new structure.
Around that.
Around that.
Yeah, we're working with the fire department.
Ted, I hope you don't make such a sound.
Well, thank you all. If you can.
So, thank you, Bob. What else, what other impressions do you have?
I just thought, you know, like I said, it compresses everything, but then it's adding space too, at the same time, on the outside of it. So it's employing, yeah, so, you know, I'm worried about the mass of five-story wall. So that was, you know, but I think if it's like a, you know, just a quick visual in my head was if there was some kind of a, like a, almost like that brownstone kind of a feel where there's a break in it that gives some kind of a break on that fifth story, maybe, so that, so that you don't have, you know, because we were going four stories, forty-some odd feet, I think it was, very 48, 45, 48 feet was approved. Now you're going five stories, so you're 50 feet plus on the roof. So, you know, the median of the roof. So, so you're talking, you know, it's just, that's, it's advanced. So I'm just saying, if there's something that could maybe, and it doesn't have to be everywhere, but if it breaks up sections of it or has a part where maybe one apartment section is peeled back and that's a walkout on some of them, a flat roof on some of them, so it tears a little bit, there's a little bit of modulation, you know, I mean, in my head, it's there, it's just, and that's the way I see it. It's hard to describe it because there's so much, there's so much going on. But it's, you know, I see the concept that it's workable, it's definitely workable.
I didn't mean that, but we just.
Yes.
Quite all right, Mr. Palster.
Hi. So I should clarify that I've been coming here for a long time. I am new to the board. I am very familiar with this project. I've seen it in all its different iterations because my comments aren't coming from just one week of, you know, being exposed to this.
So it would be fine if they were.
Sure. But to echo a little bit, I love, you know, the, I'm, in the architecture of the residential buildings, I am appreciating the overall simplicity of it. I am happy that it is not wiggling and got a whole lot of in and out. To echo Rob, I think there could be more done with the roof line to create some more interest in articulation there. On a broader concept level, I am struggling a little bit with the idea that the goal here is that residents don't ever have to go outside, is what it sounds like to me, right? That this is, everything you need is provided inside and when, you know, we talk about agriculture, even when we talk about, you know, like Village Center or Village Green and such, there is a milieu there, there is a there there, right? And if all of the residents can drive in, drive, park in the garage and have all the things that they might want to need within the walls of that building, then I feel like we've lost something in what this could be. So that is my one larger comment on this. I'm a little, I'm not totally comfortable with the location of the parking that has been added. The one on the bottom left is pretty front and center out there. We've already got a parking garage that is front and center. And then the other parking that's been added is right off the roundabout right as you get up to the top of the hill higher. So I would be interested to see if we can massage this a little bit, to move some of that parking to a less focal place. Other than that, I'll be interested to see if there are new renderings for the Trunkin Winery, City Winery is one of, it's sort of the building that you're going to see as you initially turn up in there, so particularly from the Route 9 side. I'm interested what that's going to look like.
Yeah, we'll submit that in three weeks.
Great. And then, and I noticed with these renderings, they don't show the far end of the residential building, which previously had the rotunda on the corner there. I'll be curious to see, because that's your, you know, that's your terminal vista, right, as you're coming up to the, to the roundabout. So I'll be curious to see what kind of treatment you give that as well. The building has been extended along the side of the, of the green here. Gaps between buildings can be good. I'm a little bit sorry to lose that. I understand the desire for like a sort of complete flow along there, but at the same time, if it's not too big a gap, it can be, it's a good thing to have movement, almost like a grid of streets, right? And so now we've lost the most direction, direct connection from the eventual parking garage that'll be over there. You'll be going around. I'm curious, the parking that you've added on the bottom left, there's the sidewalk going from there.
The parking on the bottom left is there.
What's that?
Is there for the approved plan.
The parking on the bottom left, the approval of parking along the roadway, right? And you've expanded the lot, is that correct?
Yeah. Well, in Phase Two, yeah, it shows like that, but in the full build-out, all that's parking and then we screen it with, remember, we came up.
Okay, so there is additional parking in this location that's not shown on this.
Yeah.
Okay, that's okay. The sidewalk that connects from down there up to the Village Green, will that be able to be ADA? Is that going to be, or is it going to not be slow?
I have to look at it. I don't remember.
Okay. That would just be.
Good question. Thought as well. Do you have an intention of moving the 1200 onto the Village Green?
Right, I think I saw the alternative that was sent there. I'd want to see what's happening on the other side of the parking by 1200. Think it's going to be complete, like is that just parking garage there then on the other side?
On the outside.
Right, yeah. I think we need to, you might need to get a bigger overall picture of what's happening.
Okay, good point.
Thank you very much. Ms. Watson?
Thanks. Generally, I think it's a better plan. I think it's more efficient, probably cheaper to build. I'm very familiar with Bezuto and I'm actually very familiar with the planning. Now, is Bezuto, I.
I master plan that.
What?
I master plan that.
Yeah, did you? You knew that I would know that? Actually, I just want to understand the structure. Is Bezuto going to be a managing agent or are they a developer of these projects?
We're looking similar to what we do with Shana on the hotels, 50/50 venture.
Okay. So you're going to say the armchair?
And we, we contract with them to manage it as well.
Okay, so Bezuto would be the manager because I mean, you can build whatever you want to build, but the one who's owning it and is managing it. So, yeah, I'm looking forward to seeing the plans as they get fleshed out, but, you know, the price point, I, as I said, I know Bezuto and we're in a different market here than what they normally do. So I'm kind of curious to see how they're going to build for the rents you can get because we want it to look, or it won't look like the planning, I understand that. Definition of temporary ratio. Definition of the word temporary, right? Because that is, that's going to be a concern, obviously, with the original concept. I completely understand that residential drives commercial, but when you say temporary, we don't know if the project lets it go past Phase 2B, right? Depending on market conditions, whatever. So what do you envision up here?
The next phase, we're looking at, will you continue Phase Two? We're not going to get the lots yet, the residential lots are back. So maybe the site hotel for the year or two, but the next one in our minds is continuing north. And then.
Is that commercial? Yes, that's a, yes, that's a commercial. Main Street that happens.
Yeah, we have a wide sign up in the north, so I have...
And this is a hundred percent market rate?
Yes.
These apartments, there's nothing workforce, affordable, lawn company, snow, any of that, and I'm not saying it's a problem, I just want to know what the concept is, it is a little bit. That's it, I'm looking forward to seeing you guys if you know, but I like the plan. Thank you, thank you so much. Chris?
So firstly, Jennifer, thank you for suggesting that overlay option. I think that's gonna be very helpful in, you know, showing where we were, where we are, and how where we are relates to the rest of the project. Secondly, so I've been very involved with this project since it came forth many years ago, and I really think this is a nice change, to see from where we were, probably ten years ago now, to now. And each time we take that new approach, we kind of go, okay, this makes more sense. And this makes more sense on many levels, from a development standpoint, how the commercial is gonna be driven, and, you know, the topography and the site layout. I think it also opens up, you know, I understand the concern with the ninety-ten temporary ratio right now, because like Stephanie was saying, you know, how do we define that temporary definition, you know? If 2C doesn't get built, is it temporary? But to piggyback off of that, I think with the amount of that front-loaded residential, it's almost inevitable that that commercial will follow, because it in theory has to. But I think with removing those other buildings, it may allow for more commercial down the road, which, you know, it, because you're not at a threshold where you can have any more potential to build, it's not like we're finding open space. So there's a, there's a point there, you may have some more space to add, not such a tall mixed-use building, or maybe a larger anchor tenant down the road, that can really accommodate this large residential unit, where as this, as we massage this and grow this site and community, we may see that there's demand for that when we look at 2C. And now we can kind of shrink down those two buildings that have, since you've done a lot of the engineering and planning, to put a building there, it may, you know, something may go in there that can be commercial and accommodate, you know, all the residents that you have there. But other than that, I'm excited, because, you know, I think this is, like Stephanie said, easier to build, it makes more sense for the site, and I think it, you know, it'll guide the rest of the site. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Rob. Mr. Garcia.
To me, it seems like a big departure from what I see.
Can you speak up a little bit, please?
It seems to me like it's a big departure from what I see, but, I mean, it's exciting. I mean, I can see your vision. I'd like to see the rest of it. I definitely want to see all those of what's changed, not that I disagree with it. The only thing that I have, the first thing that hit me with the garage, it's interesting, but it's in the center, I'm wondering, is there just one entrance in, one entrance and exit, and how does that look for fire? And if there's issues in that garage or something like that, how that's all gonna interact? I mean, I like the idea of shielding the garage, when you get a lot of cars.
It will be all concrete, and sprinkler, you know, NFPA or NFPA from team.
Yeah, I mean, in my mind, I always think of visiting the electric car.
If that's, if that, the fire chief says we don't want charges in there.
Yeah, I would not, but it's very much harder to hunt it, and etc. like that. It's definitely exciting. I think it's another twist and turn, but I'd like to see the rest in the overlays.
Yep. We'll be in three weeks.
Thank you so much.
One thing would be really nice to see is it's a rendering from nine eventually for this, because...
I'm sorry.
A rendering from nine, from the entrance.
Let's do it, then.
Okay. I mean, like, I like, as others have said, I sort of, I like what this has done to the site, I think these are gonna look real tall. I've been, five stories, I'm on up on the top. I think these are gonna look very tall, five stories with the elevation.
So we'll give one from nine, and also I'm doing one down Main Street.
Sure.
At eye level.
Yeah, she's got the threes and then the fives.
Right, so you may, that may be a vantage point, Larry, would be like the southwest
corner, so you can get a little bit of perspective of what the hotel, you know, not the whole thing, but just so you have an actual, yeah.
So we're gonna do southwest corner, Main Street, and then room nine, twelve. What do you think? Okay. We'll...
I have a quick question. What's the total count?
Total is three hundred and forty-four, which is what we have. Originally it was two hundred and twenty-four, but then the five buildings, and then now consolidated three hundred and one, and then on the Village Green, most of the rest on the loss. So total is three forty-four, it was one twenty and two four twenty-four, so it's total of three forty-four, which is changing the ratio.
That plan there reduces the square footage of 1200 by 4,000, so it takes away forty yards. But you're right, it's a good point, because the garage is different.
You want to line that up a bit more? Line that one in.
Larry, is your, is your plan to keep this parking here after you go to 2C? Yes, yes. Because that would be, you know, my only concern would be, you know, you're kind of creating Main Street with that other building.
Yeah.
Coming in here, and then if you have that parking and then, you know, crosswalk, you know, you're kind of changing that dynamic a little bit, it's something to look at, how that new parking and new building kind of relates to the rest of the site.
What we could do is kind of dash what the, so you can kind of feel it a little bit better.
So I'd like to thank my colleagues for some very good feedback. I hope you guys can work with what we've said. I echo, again, I need to absorb this, but I understand, I'm not surprised to see this change, and I think, I think Stephanie, you, it's efficient, it's, and I've never seen anything like that around here. I can't, can't say, oh, well, this is just like, there's nothing like it. We were looking very much like East Hill before, with the way that was set up. This is now taking on its own unique bent on whatever it looks like, and a totally different character. I like that it gives you more open space, which will hopefully get them out of their apartments and walking on some of these trails and experiencing less concrete, less asphalt.
It's likely that we're able to make the farm area bigger.
Bigger, yes. So, you know, I think you're hearing some really good feedback. As far as the height, here's my, this is the only place in Hyde Park, it's the only location in Hyde Park, where you could go up to five stories and not look really out of place. You have a hotel right next to it that goes up five stories, which is right across the street from buildings that are five stories, and so this is, again, I've always said the Bellfield Hotel kind of is a mirror, it's not a mirror, but it complements what's across the street. And so you have an opportunity here to complement what's across the street. To me, the five stories doesn't really look out of place, especially when you drop it down to two stories, and then there's five stories, and it's looking like this. So, I mean, I can see the rationale of saying this, isn't the change, but I'm not, you know, I'm not going to be making that decision, really, it's gonna be all us together working, but I can see this working well.
We really do appreciate this feedback, and we'll definitely respond to each of your comments. And there will be a lot of discussion, right? We'll all have to debate our copy of the plan and see the findings. And certainly, the town board will be helping you out and also addressing those issues, the variations, but we look forward to coming back and working with you, putting the project...
So we're looking forward to seeing you, you said you're gonna try to come back on August 21st?
We are submitting the eighth, and we'll be back the twenty-first.
Excellent. Well, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Are you going to be here, or do you expect you're wanting to be back at the town hall?
I have no idea. There's no way. Where are we gonna be on August 21st here, or in town hall?
Oh, we're gonna be in town hall, don't worry about that.
He's in charge.
Okay. What do you think, John, are we...
He's in charge, we're gonna be in town hall, we're gonna be in the whole table.
Thanks, everybody, appreciate it.
Great to see you, Paul. We worked this side on the map.
Read something? A line note? Oh, we just had a whole booth.
May I care?
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the town board control of the NRI condition to amend zoning.
I'm sorry, we're not gonna be able to hear you.
Where's my gavel? Our next, it's actually not an application, but the planning board's been asked to consider a zoning code change. This is in reference to the NRI hotel villas that we just recently approved, and so I would like to know if anybody would like to make a motion to enter into a attorney-client session.
I would like to make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Down the hallway across in the chief's room.
Okay. Maybe we might pass around there.
Go ahead.
Yes. Okay. Hey, get a motion to come out of executive session, so I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we've just entered from executive session, no decisions were made, no votes were taken, and we're moving on to the next?
Attorney-client session for advice of counsel.
Thank you. Attorney-client session.
For advice of counsel.
For advice of counsel, I'll get it one of these years. But we, there's no further discussion tonight. We need to, we'll now move on to the next item on the agenda.
I'm gonna count this as part of my vacation.
You got different, you got a different...
I wanted to see you all as a little... Have to do this, have to do this again soon. All right.
You saved my one, yeah, you saved.
Have a good rest of the summer.
Thank you.
See you.
Thank you all. All right, next item on the agenda is written, William and Elizabeth. Oh, and Ron Williams has this, this is for installation of HVAC in the studio apartment.
Yes, Elizabeth and William Ring, 47 River Road, site plan waiver, Resolution 2024-27, whereas request for site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by William and Elizabeth Ring for installation of HVAC system on the property associated with an existing, an existing studio requiring a building permit, and whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives the site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the building permit received by the Building Department, June 13, 2004, and per the request of the Planning Board, dated July 1, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any mayors or exceptions, motions, thank you. And that is our last item on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you to everybody, well done.
Nice job.